Well, who's the meanest person? Who else go say something to him?
Well, I opened the door. I thought that might do it.
This time.
How old is he?
Little kid?
No, he's like a teen, I'd say like early teen.
Oh, me? Well, hey.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, how are you? How are you?
Well, how you doing, all right?
Good.
Good seeing you.
Yeah.
You're all right? How you doing, Mr. Winfrey?
I'm doing good.
You're good? Very good. Mr. Winfrey?
Hi, good to see you. Hello.
How about Chris? That works better.
Okay, all right, good seeing you.
Good.
How you doing?
Chris Lee's here. Well. I'm gonna have to make a motion right away that we amend the minutes from the last meeting because there's misspelling for of our attorney's name. They spelled your name C-H-U-C-H.
Is that the only amendment? Yeah, it sure did, right there.
I've seen it misspelled, C-H-I-C-K, which is also the.
Maybe it's that the, maybe that's the German spelling or something.
I was gonna spell his name, I'd spell L-A-T-E, late. Hey, Robbie, if I go out this door, the alarm gonna go off.
It won't go off.
Sorry, I missed all the fun at the, the, the working, uh, meeting there.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Winfrey.
Was it cleanup on this, or? It was, I mean.
That's here, I tell her we'll bite you.
Good gracious.
I thought I had it.
Alright, I appreciate it. Well, I'll be more careful.
Gotcha. I wrote down there, so it's, and where that?
Exactly.
And this thing got confused in my backpack. Laptop, it's sad.
It's my check. It's my check.
Close session.
Oh, oh, the minute?
Yep.
Alright.
Let's see if he spelled your name right on this one.
Who spelled them wrong?
They got it right this time.
You spelled Chuck's name wrong.
Did I really? Yep.
Same last name.
You didn't spell his last name, you just spelled it first.
That's the important part.
I have a dumb question.
Yes, we are, so, just a couple, I think my dad and Mason's granddad. So, I think that's what.
I think that's what they determined.
I believe we were.
We're having a reunion in a couple weeks, we'll figure it out.
That's the best place to figure that stuff out. Get all the, uh, all the senior members of the tribe together, let them.
Yeah.
Figure it out, yeah.
Yeah, anybody in the neighborhood probably related, we're still working on cousin Oka, haven't quite figured out the connection, I'm working hard on that one, that's important.
Does she have an alternate spelling though, doesn't she with the Y?
Yeah, actually, uh, one of my dad's, or granddad's brother spelled his name E-Y.
I know another name that's like that around here is Kootz, like I've seen K-O-O-N-T-S, K-O-O-N-T-Z, and I've seen K-O-O-N-C-E.
Oh, really?
And that's down, not so much here, but like toward Lexington, Welcome. High point, a lot of Kootzes down the hood, yeah.
I get my right packet, I'm confused.
I think for some of us, you know, it's, yeah, right there, grandparents were, or great grandparents, or great, great, great grandparents were asked, how you spell your last name, and some of them, that didn't have a whole lot of school, you know, so they just spelled it the way it sounded.
Hanging in there.
Hanging in there.
I'm hanging in there, that's about all I can do.
That's right.
And you?
Are you already got?
He's already got it.
I got, yeah, I got.
Yesterday or today, is yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Mr. Southern?
Hi.
Ron, Ron, I'm the one I'm thinking.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to be here.
I heard. Good for you to be here.
I had two stamps put in my heart, I heard this.
No.
Oh goodness. Well, you look like you're doing great for having such.
Your back's healed up.
So sorry about that.
Your back's healed up pretty good.
So, this is the, uh, large.
This year has been. I have my back operated on the twenty eighth of January, if I had, uh, two stamps put in to self-connection.
Oh my gosh. Well, I'm glad you're, hopefully you're back a hundred percent now.
I'm doing good.
Well, good.
He's got a seven, for, it's called Norman's Place, one fifty eight, so he submitted it back in March, and the TRC approved it today.
Good to see you.
He's brought the plans with him, but we just don't have a staff report, that's the one thing we don't have, so, up to you guys.
I think I'd like to have a staff report.
You know, I guess Avery would have it with him.
I don't know, the, uh.
Here he is.
Hey, how are you? We'll see.
Avery, you okay?
Doing alright.
It's one of those things, if you wanna add it, at the adoption of the agenda, you can, you know, council does it all the time. That's okay. I was telling, there's a guy from the county that apparently parks at the car wash all the time, parks his truck there.
And the people from, um, the nursing home.
Oh, the nursing, oh, that's right.
Because they can't smoke on site. So they have to get in their, in their car and go to.
Are you talking about, are you talking about the residents or the police?
I think the residents, they just go to the bathroom, they just finish their chance.
No, they just do it in bed.
Well, it's like the hospital, if you go to Baptist hospitals, they'll stand out there.
Kind of hospital, they just, cause I'm at the hospital all the time, they just go out to the brick perimeter and they just sit. And they're like, yeah, and they're out there in scrubs or whatever, they're just smoking, I'm like, this is just, I just think it looks bad. But, nobody asked me anything.
Sounds, T, it sounds like, sounds like my old high school.
Yeah, that's right.
Smoking court.
We had, we had smoking sessions.
Oh, we did?
We did too, my, well, my first two, yeah, until we moved to a new school.
We actually had a court, cause the classrooms were in a square.
Courtyard, yeah.
We didn't have a courtyard, we couldn't afford that, yeah. We were just like down the hallway.
In a roof.
In a roof, yes. My high school was built in nineteen sixty five, and it hasn't changed much since. It's pretty much the same, but it's always.
We're not gonna talk about that, cause mine was built in sixty seven.
It was new then?
And it was brand new, and I started in sixty eight.
It's probably changed a lot since then, I was a fifty.
And it was, it was rebuilt when my son was in school.
You're doing well.
So, contrary to how Guilford County does, they rebuilt my high school in, let's see, Mark Cragsway in, oh, five, oh, three. So, it was thirty, well, twenty-five years.
I was there fifteen, fifteen years after you, T.
Yep, you were in.
I started in eighty-three, well, officially, I came in eighty-four, cause I was sophomore.
I hadn't heard from Steve.
He started in eighty-three.
He's really be here.
Were you in school with Jody Bundy?
Do you have a paper copy of these?
I wanna say he was like eighty-seven.
The big paper copy.
Eighty-six.
No, 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 of the ordinances. My laptop is not cooperating.
I knew a Mrs. Bundy. I've got it out there, biology teacher, I wanna say, maybe use it in our meeting, that's my problem, I was about to put it back out there.
That's funny. Um, it is not gonna cooperate. I don't know, it's sideways.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder if, I wonder if they were related, if that was his mom or something.
There was a Bundy teacher while I was there. But, I'm sure it's not the same one.
Maybe, watch it.
Fifteen years, it might have been.
Might have been.
She might have been fresh out of, you know, college or something.
Well, she was older, she taught.
Magnifying glass ever.
Short handed.
No, it's not that small, I bring it here.
Jody is the keyboard player for the Band of Oz.
Really?
Yes, thank you. And David Franks was in school with me. Was the previous keyboard player for the Band of Oz, so he retired and Jody took over. I said, well. Be healed.
It is, it worked, no?
That was it working?
Yeah.
I said, be healed.
Still has his special powers.
Well, good thing you didn't put any holy water on there. That would have healed it permanently.
Got them all fixed up.
I have a degree in computer science, but, you know, things change a little bit since I got that degree.
Still using punch cards.
Yeah, careful man, when I was in college, I did that. I did that, man.
You used punch cards?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Uh, computers, all this interactive computing is a fad, I'm gonna keep my punch card.
I can't say anything, when I, I took a coding class, I remember we would, uh, save all of those codes, so we wouldn't have to retype them over and over, and then when I lost access to that, I didn't know what I was doing.
I think we're gonna put, if Ron could come up here, cause we're gonna be.
So, what you want to, so what you'll do is, um, open the meeting up, and then as the chairman, you can say, uh, in absence of Mr. Louie.
Yeah.
Replace Mr. Southern up here.
Okay. Alright, it's, I've got seven oh one, and the town attorney is present. So, I am gonna call this meeting to order, uh, let's get started with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Southern, with Mr. Louis' absence, do you mind replacing him up here? Review and adopt the agenda for tonight, uh, July twenty fourth, I have one thing I would like to change, um, are there any other amendments that anybody else has?
I will add at this time that there was a request of the board, just something to consider, uh, Mr. Severs from FEI had requested the addition of, um, an agenda item to consider, uh, case involving, uh, the Cook Norman's Place subdivision off Highway one fifty-eight, and so, um, I'm sure that if, if, uh, you need more details to make that decision, let me know, but that request, uh, was provided today, my understanding is that it has received TRC approval, uh, just don't know if we have a staff report just yet, no staff report?
No staff report.
No. So, something for the board to consider, up, up to you all, but it was, uh, the application was submitted in March, is that right, so, so technically it did meet the deadline of June the fourth, it's just up to you all to decide with your discretion if you want to add it with that lack of a staff report.
Okay, um, I will allow some discussion from the board up here, from my opinion, with no staff report and not seeing, we don't have anything to look at tonight, I don't think in good conscience from my seat that I can, can review it, um, but I'll, I mean, I'm one vote of five, so.
I agree with you.
I would like to see the pledge also.
Okay.
And he does, I think, uh, he did bring with him a copy of the, of the, the plans, uh, but that's, I think that's about the extent of it, I don't know that we have a copy of the comments or the, or the report, but there's a copy of the plans with him, so, that's one thing to look at, but again.
Alright, I would like to make a motion that we review and adopt the agenda with one change, in the public hearing portion of the, uh, agenda, it references that we're gonna review a total seventy-four changes been proposed, um, PTRC, the town attorney, and the town planner, um, we are only gonna review the one sixty D items tonight, so I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with that change.
So, I guess it'd be safe to say just section one of that summary, of that, that work.
Roman number one.
Uh, stand by.
That's right.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Sounds good.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
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 And I'm also, uh. Public comment period, uh, each speaker must identify themselves, give their names and addresses, and each speaker is limited to three minutes, if you are here to comment about the public hearing item, agenda, there will be a separate time to comment during that, um, hearing, anybody?
I will, I, I think we may have skipped over item three, uh, the minutes.
My bad.
That's okay, that's fine, it's at the top of the page.
I will back up, sir. Review and adopt the following minutes for, uh, March twenty-seventh, regular town planning board meeting, and B, March twenty-seventh, twenty-five, closed session town planning board meeting.
Should I make my motion?
Yes, sir.
There was some misspelling of our town attorney's first name, I'd like to correct that in the, uh, minutes there in attendance.
And that's on the regular one?
Yes.
So, you're making a motion to adopt those with that change?
Yes, I will make that motion to adopt the minutes as they are with that change.
Okay, I will second that.
I'll say I've been called worse than.
Curtis?
I'm aye.
Ron?
Aye.
T?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm also, uh, alright, now we're to the public comment period, uh, each speaker must identify themselves, give their name and address, and is limited to three minutes, anybody here wanna speak? Didn't we approve them both?
You, did you approve both, was the motion for both or just one set?
Oh, apologies, I was making my motion for the public, uh, portion of the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, minutes, so maybe we did need to a separate motion for the.
The closed session?
Closed session, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the closed session minutes.
There you go.
I second.
Alright.
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
T?
Aye.
And I'm also, uh.
We don't usually have two sets on there, sorry.
Robbie, can I go to the public comment?
I think you're good now.
Alright, anybody that wants to speak, um, may do so at this time for three minutes, anybody wanna speak? Okay, new business, site plan review case twenty-five dash oh-two, site zero zero one nine zero seventy-seven oh-nine Athens Road, the subject property is located at seventy-seven oh-nine Athens Road, Guilford County Tax Parcel Number one six seven six four five in Oak Ridge Township, immediately southeast of the intersection of Athens Road and US one fifty-eight, and compromises approximately two acres, the subject is, subject property is zone light industrial, this request for approval is of a site plan proposing warehouse self-storage development consisting of approximately nineteen thousand square feet of storage space across four buildings, and do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, you summarized it well, I don't have too much to add, uh, Guilford County staff has earlier reviewed the, the site plan, um, you can see the attached comments in the chat at the end, um, and in summary, staff recommends approval.
And for those on the board that don't know, there is a large size map up here, cause even with my glasses, I couldn't see it in our package. Any questions or comments from the board?
Is this, is this the plot that the car wash was on?
Yes, sir.
I got my, I got my straight.
If any of the board wants to look, it is, the map is right there, or the site plan. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, it might be helpful if someone wanted to make a motion that the, uh, that there be a finding that, uh, staff has reviewed it and found that it complies with all the development ordinances, that's, that's the main, uh, that's really all the, what needs to be determined, it doesn't comply or not comply.
What is it zoned, is on?
Light industrial.
Light industrial, what do they wanna do with it? Am they rezoning it?
No, site plan.
Oh, the thing in the back can't nobody read.
It's right, there's a big copy right up there, Ron.
I'm familiar with the land anyway, so.
I, I'll make a motion that it conforms to the development ordinances as outlined, the site plan does.
I'll second.
I guess you, you said therefore be approved, we should approve the plan.
We should approve the plan. Curtis?
Uh, do we, we have a second?
Yeah, Ron's second.
I'll, I'll vote yes.
Ron?
Aye.
T?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. Public hearing items, propose, proposed revisions to the town's development ordinances, a total of seventy-four changes that have been proposed, focusing on just item one or one sixty D items, the proposed revisions aim to bring the ordinance into compliance with applicable state statutes, correct patent errors in existing tax, address limitations related to the regulation of signage, incorporate other modifications that may be deemed beneficial to the ordinance's, ordinance's clarity, functionality, and effectiveness, the Stokesdale's Town Planning Board will make a recommendation to the Stokesdale Town Council, which will have the final authority to approve or deny the proposed changes, the proposed changes have been available on the town's website and for in-person public inspection at town hall during business hours, the public is invited to express their opinion on the proposed changes, the current, the current ordinances or any other changes that the speaker wishes to see, um, and the chairman is gonna reserve the right to limit each speaker to the three minutes, so I am gonna, do I have to make a motion to declare this open?
You can actually declare it open as the chairman.
I'm gonna declare it open.
Confirm that it was noticed, there was public notice of this public hearing.
Correct, yep, and it was noticed, um, in the Guilford County legal, uh, electronic website, so that's where we post our notices now, so, it's been there for, uh, over ten days, but not more than twenty-five.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I guess this point you'd invite any speakers, I guess, who won't?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it here in the package, just. Alright, is there anybody here that wants to speak regarding the ordinance changes? In favor? Anybody against? Alright, well, I think this is just open for discussion at this point.
Yes, you can, uh, I guess you can declare the public hearing closed, and no one's here to speak.
I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. So, for the board, and I think three of us were here at the joint work session, uh, a couple of weeks ago, well, three of the planning board members, uh, in June, and we, we went through this in depth, but I do think there are some items that need to be addressed or discussed, I think we need to discuss each one of these as we go through them, so if you look in your book at the changes for one sixty D compliance under number one. And Chuck, do you wanna walk us through this as we go?
Yes, I'd be glad to, um, uh, so, just to, just to backtrack a little bit, so the, uh, this process began, I guess, early last year, I believe, and the town, town council authorized the, um, staff to deal with PTRC to review our previous ordinance, um, and find, recommend changes to conform with, uh, with the, what I call the new chapter one sixty D, uh, which has actually been on the books now for several years, but, um, um, and they came back, I guess it was last October, I believe it was.
That's correct.
Uh, and they produced a report that included, um, in addition to the items in, under number, Roman number one tonight, uh, there were about eight or nine other changes, um, that they recommended, um, during the work session, uh, that we had, um, I guess about a month ago now, um, we determined that about eight or nine of those changes that they had made were not strictly required by one sixty D, so we moved those, uh, those changes, we moved from, uh, Roman number one, I think I, I put those in, under Roman numeral four, um, primarily, so, um, uh, so now we, so, based on our discussions at the work session, I kinda went back and massaged the list and put everybody, put them in the categories I thought they belonged in, based on, um, the consensus of both the planning board and the town council at that meeting, so, um, I'll, I'll be prepared to discuss that, one thing I do want to say though there, um, well, nevermind. One thing I do want to say, though, there, well, never mind, if we're only considering Roman number one, so I was going to go through those. Section one-point-five, I mean, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go item by item?
I, I think we, we need to.
Okay.
And if, that was part of the reason to break it up so we could.
Okay. So, so this, section one-dash-five, if you, if you have a paper copies on page seven of three-hundred-and-forty, I don't know what those page numbers are on the, those aren't the right page numbers if you have the enlarged one, but, but anyway, that, the old statute made reference to one-sixty-A, which was replaced by one-sixty-D, so those are, the enabling legislation was changed from the old statute to the new statute, essentially.
Okay, and that's item A, or A?
That's right, that's, that's one, one-dash-five.
Okay.
Do you want me to move over to the next one, or are you discussing that one, or?
Is there any discussion on that one from the board? From my seat, I do not have any.
Okay, all right. Then moving to one-dash-ten, um, so one-sixty-D imposed additional notice requirements or changes of comprehensive plan, and so this change once to one-dash-ten just incorporated that, those new one-sixty-D requirements. Item C deals with a requirement under one-sixty-D that, that maps be maintained either at the office, or I guess they would also be maintained online, accessible from the, from the town's website.
I, I have a discussion around this item.
Okay.
And for the board, this can either be electronically or in hard copy. However, the maps have to be, it's something that Guilford County, every time there's a zoning change, updics automatically online. If it is, so that means every time there's a zoning change, you're going to have to print a new copy to maintain on, at, at the Town Hall. So in interest of cost-saving and simplicity, I, I would like to make the recommendation on that particular item, that we maintain it through the GIS website, which is a link on the town's website, and then we don't have to print one every time there's a zoning change.
That's good. And I've got a, a, the town's website pulled up there on the television screen. If you go to the planning department down at the bottom, it is a, just a paragraph explaining what Guilford County does for that GIS mapping for the town, explains that they, they maintain a GIS for the entire county, which includes the town, and so folks can click that link and use that to see the zoning map. Now, you won't automatically see it, but if you, that base layer, you'll pull up the zoning.
Right.
So it's just, it is a lot easier to do it that way, and it's always up to date, more up to date than a printed map.
Well, it, it would concern me that we would give a citizen inaccurate information, not intentionally, but because there's a lag time in printing that.
An old map.
Right.
Because we would have to get them from the county and, and bring them to Stokesdale, so it would be, you know, there's a possibility that it could be updated again before it even makes it from the county's office to the Town Hall.
That's right.
All right, then moving to, I'm sorry, any more discussion on that? I don't want to jump ahead if anybody.
Any other comments from the board?
And I just agree that electronic records better, I mean, you've got, heaven forbid, but if there was any kind of, you know, natural disaster or something that took out Town Hall, we'd have, we'd have everything backed up to the cloud.
That's right. Right. Chuck, with, with this one kind of not being checked off as we're going through this, this is something a little different, do we need to make this change in the motion when we approve these, or do we, how do we want to handle this for?
Well, I guess, so you're making a recommendation to the town council, so I, so I guess what we could do is, when you make your motion, i-if you were to approve all these, and you could say with the, with the provision that with regard to item C.
Okay.
We would like to have, we would recommend to the town council that that be just maintained through the GIS system.
Okay.
Instead of fiscal map.
That's fine.
All right, the next one is dealing with section two-dash-one-point-two, which is on page, I'm sorry, page fifteen of three-hundred-and-forty. And that, the old, the current ordinance refers to one-sixty-A, which is the obsolete chapter, and this refers to the correct provision of one-sixty-D.
Okay.
So it's a statutory reference. And again, I'll move forward if anybody else won't, I don't want to cut off anybody if they want to discuss it.
I think for the ease of Mr. Winfrey not having to ask that question, board, if there's a question, speak up, otherwise, I think he can.
Okay, just move forward.
We'll roll along.
Okay. All right. Second, let me go to the next one, so, um, under section, this is E, under three-dash-three, three-dash-three-point-one, um, there's a requirement, um, one-sixty-D imposes a requirement that their, that approvals be in writing and can, and how they can be delivered, so it's not enough to announce an approval, there has to be some written notification, which is current practice now, anyway, but one-sixty-D requires it, so that, that change just incorporates what statute requires.
Okay.
Number F, um, I'm sorry, yeah, number, uh, letter F, which is on page fifty-eight of three-forty, um, this incorporates requirements of one-sixty-D that permits run with the land, in other words, if you make an approval to a permit and the owner of the property sells it to somebody else, the purchaser gets the same rights that the buyer had, the change of ownership doesn't affect the rights for development or approvals that were done. So that incorporates that provision of law. And there's also number I under that category, under that item, if there's a change of the ordinance from the time that the permit was applied for and, and then granted, the applicant has the right to choose which version of.
Either, basically.
Ordinance, ordinance they want to be with. So those are the two changes that were new to one-sixty-D, which we have incorporated into the, into the ordinance. Moving to G. This is similar to the previous change, one-sixty-D requires that the town give written notice of any determinations made regarding a, an application or permit, and it allows for personal delivery, electronic mail, or first-class mail to the, to the applicant.
This is the one where we said just it can't be electronic mail only, right? We, that's kind of what we were in the last meeting. Making sure it's, you can use electronic mail as one of the means, but we wanted to make sure it still stayed with, like, postal delivery.
Certified.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so we could, so that might be, I think we, this change, I think that came from PTRC, incorporated the language, but if you want to make that kind of more restrictive, then that might be another recommendation that you'd be making to this.
Chuck, for my reference, what, what page is that on? I want to read that.
It's on, um, page sixty-two.
Okay, wasn't quite there yet.
Okay. So this is three-dash-four-point-three, notice of determinations.
I feel like the conversation we had was just where it says personal delivery, electronic mail, or first class, not letting electronic mail be the sole delivery method, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Chuck, do we have the liberty to reword this slightly, I'm assuming?
Yeah, and what I would say is, you could, you could recommend that the ordinance, we could, yeah, we could reword it tonight, or you could say, we'd recommend it be changed to, to provide that email is not going to be the only method of notification that it's either going to be.
So, you can't say email and because we may not have their email address.
Right.
What if you had that?
You say email and, I mean, email if available.
Written notice.
Email and if available and one of the other options.
Right.
Or writ, yeah, written notice and email if.
Right.
Electronic if available.
Right. So written notice by either personal delivery or, let's see, I'm seeing how it's said.
First-class mail.
So are you okay with first-class mail?
That's what it says here, but.
Yeah, I guess it's not as reliable as it used to be, but it's probably still okay.
At least you have, like, I guess, record of.
Right.
Of sending it, yeah.
Not with first-class.
Not with first-class.
Yeah, true.
Registered.
True.
We do registered or certified?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, so.
Send those out, now are they certified?
I'm sorry?
For rezoning cases? Or just notice? No, not. No, okay, that's fine, I didn't think it was required.
Right, yeah, so first-class, there's no proof of, of mailing or delivery, the one. There'll be a certificate, I mean, the clerk will certify that they mailed it, but it's, that's not proved, I mean, that doesn't prove that the mail was actually delivered.
Yeah, we would type up a certificate of mailing saying that we at least put it in the post office to be sent.
Gotcha.
To these addresses.
It'd be cumbersome to, to, your other options would be to use FedEx, which is expensive, or you could do certified mail overturned if requested, and get the little green cards back, but that's, my experience with that is, that's hit and miss, and if the person's not home and they don't want to sign anything, they think they're being sued. Then nothing happens. So I think first-class is probably.
Sufficious.
I mean, if that's what they.
So I guess, so I guess as I, if I understand your, your suggestion would be to say that it would be email if known and written notice by first-class.
Or.
Personal delivery.
Or personal delivery.
Okay.
I, I'm good with that, is the rest of the board good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, and then, um, item H deals with the appeal periods, one-sixty-D change appeal periods from, there's a statutory, everyone has an appeal period of thirty days. The previous ordinance stated fifteen days, and that's no longer legal, so we change that to comply with one-sixty-D.
Good.
Let's see, that, um, one-sixty-D also under item I deals with inspections, this is regarding enforcement, inspection, and investigations. One-sixty-D now requires that the owner consent to any on-site visits to the property, so, so that incorporates requirement and ordinance. I'm not sure about drones, I don't know how that counts, I have to, I'll think about that one, but, we'll figure that out.
And that could be a, a delivery method.
Yeah, true, too, yeah, have it by drone. Or we could do TikTok. Three-dash-six-point-three, um, I think I just talked about, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, three-dash-six-point-three deals with the requirement to have determinations, either approvals or notice of violations or determinations be made in writing. But that's, again, another requirement from, from one-sixty-D.
Okay.
Item K, give me a second to get over to that real quick, I'm sorry. So this is dealing, dealing with performance guarantees. So if, if we wanted to, if, if at some point the, the developer or somebody was, was required to post a bond or, or give performance guarantees, one-sixty-D dash eight-oh-four-one establishes what the requirements for that, that bond would be. So that, again, incorporates, incorporates that requirement, so, our ordinance already contemplated these financial guarantees, and this is to make sure that follows the requirements of one-sixty-D in doing so. Item L, three-dash-one-point, no, three-dash-twelve, um, um, so, under item C, let me see, I'm not sure exactly what that's. I guess a couple, a couple of things, um, it incorporates the language, which I guess is kind of three-dash-one, three-dash-twelve, three-dash-twelve-point-one-C are kind of melded together here, and it says it requires map amendments can only be issued by the landowner, landlord's agent, or the town itself. So in other words, it doesn't contemplate anymore what's called downzoning, where a neighbor or somebody else says, I want to downzone my neighbor's property, or, or some other property. So that's, that covers L and M, I guess, really the same thing, it appears to me.
Okay.
Now, there was a, PTRC has suggested a change, three-dash-twelve-point-one-E dealing with downzoning, but that wasn't one-sixty-D requirement, so we took that out of, out of this Roman number one. So under, on page seventy-four is next one, which is item N as in Nancy, three-dash-thirteen-point-four, well, first off, three-dash-thirteen-point-one incorporates the new language conditional zoning, used to be called conditional use districts, and one-sixty-D has now changed that to, to one, to conditional zoning districts. That's under three-dash-thirteen-point-one, which I think I left off this list, so I'll put that back on this list. Three-dash-thirteen-point-four. Deals with A and B, so it, it states the, on special use permits, the requirements of a sketch plan, anyone submitting a request for a special use permit has to, has to submit a sketch plan, and then have to give notice as required by one-sixty-D. All those, again, are, are changes, and then also lays out the requirement that that be what's called a quasi-judicial hearing, and which should not be a, your garden provides only hearing, it'd be quasi-judicial, and everybody be under oath, and you have to make certain findings of fact, which the one-sixty-D requires, so, so those. you have to make certain findings of fact, which the 160 D requires, so, so those changes under item N as in Nancy, that would be, again, that's split, solely to comply with 160 day. Three dash fourteen point four C. So item O deals with the conditions, so there, 160 D imposes limits on, on conditions that, that a town can impose on a use, for example, you can't say condition on you paying a, a impact fee of X dollars per lot, for example, the law doesn't allow that, and so it makes it clear that the town can't impose that requirement. Then moving to item P. So 160 D made a lot of changes in, in the area of what's called vested rights. In other words, the question of what happens if, if the town gives approvals, how long?
Does the permit valid?
That's right, and, and do they have a, can, once they've got those rights, under what circumstances can the town change course and rescind or limit those rights? And so this, this deals with the issue of vested rights. And, again, it, again incorporates language that was actually one of the main driving forces between 160 D to start with, was to protect vested rights once they, once permits have been issued.
Can somebody tell me what the county is on that, I believe it's two years?
I think it is two years as well.
That's the one that the council was wanting to possibly make longer.
Yeah.
That was, yeah, and currently, the ordinance states one year. And so, and 160 D says that one year is the minimum. And so, so it's not technically a requirement of 160 D that that be increased, but you could certainly recommend as part of your motion, I think it's actually an item that's under Roman numeral three, where we talked about, it's kind of a recommendation I had to have, make a recommendation on how long that vesting period would be. So.
So. 160 D says we have to do it between two to five, and we have to make a recommendation of what that is when we send it to the town council?
No, 160 D says it has to be a minimum of one year.
Right.
And so, and that's what the current ordinance reads.
Okay.
So 160 D doesn't require change.
Okay.
Because it already complies with the requirements of 160 D.
So what you're saying is the change for two years would be in the next month's meetings about suggested changes?
Or, or if you want, yeah, or you could, you could say, you know, we think that, you know, we, we think that it should be increased one year or two years, based on, I mean, I realize you said just deal with item number one. So, yeah, you could say, keep it like it is, or, or consider it at the next month's meeting, when you, if you want to deal with that at that time.
Any discussion on that from the board? I think we just stay the course from my seat, unless anybody has an objection on that one.
Okay. Okay. Uh, let me see, let me catch up here. I think we've gotten down to, so we were on item P as in Paul, I believe, let's see.
That's correct.
Three dash sixteen point four. Yes. This, one, item P is a, is a incorporation of 160 D's requirements that if you try to revoke a previous, a permit that was previously issued, that you have to give same kind of notice requirements you did for the original approval, so. So it's a, it's a notice requirement that 160 D require.
Okay.
Item Q, four dash two point three.
I think that may actually be four, two point four, not two point three.
You're right, it looks like it should, should be.
Two point four.
Yeah, four dash two point four. Item Q, and that adopts the conditional, instead of conditional use, conditional zoning districts. Item R, we're skipping over into article seven. Seven dash one point nine, it, it gives these statutory references, again, under the previous, in the current ordinance, it incorporates, I think, 160 A and the other statutory references, and that should be referring to 160 D. Make sure I tell you right here, pull it up here.
Yeah, that looks like just a clerical thing.
Right.
Okay.
Trying to get a lot of catch up here. Yeah, that's right, just clerical, change 160, eight, 160 day, so. Then seven dash five point one. Yeah, there's, okay, seven point, I guess the index, for some reason the index in the word document doesn't pick up seven point five point one, but it's actually there, so. But again, that's just correcting the statutory, that's on page two sixty-five of the ordinance. So again, it just changes 160 A to 160 D and correct articles of those. Going to eight point three, this is item T as in Tom. This deals with the en- enforcement procedures, and again, 160 D incorporated limitations and procedural guidelines for owners and developers on how notices violations, and so it defines that owners have to be given notice. And again, here it says by personal service, electronic delivery, or posting notice on the property. So here's another issue where you all may want to decide, do you want to just say email's enough, or you want email if known plus one of these other categories? Or is it can, you would can? Or is it can do, like, if you're notifying of a notice violation to someone, do, do, is email sufficient? No, we send those by sort of.
Okay.
Maybe we just do it like the, the previous one?
I'm sorry?
Can we word it like the previous item where, I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing it out?
And Chuck, this is eight, eight dash three point one.
Correct, that's right. It's on page.
Two seventy-four is what I got.
Okay. Yes, and so, the change is recommended by the PTRC. It said certified mail, comma, electronic delivery, comma, or by posting. And so, I, I would, it sounds like you all, maybe better practice, I think, than Avery says, if the county's practices, to send by certified mail.
I will say, our ordinance does not require that, our ordinance is an or, so it's personal delivery, first class, or certified mail, we just generally.
Or email?
It does not specify email. It's personal delivery, first class, or certified.
Okay, so, so it, it's, so we could take email out completely, or we could say email if available and the others.
And this is only in the event of a, a violation?
Uh, yes.
So you're not, in theory, you're not going to do a huge amount of these from an expense standpoint?
Right. I wouldn't say.
I would certainly include the certified mail in there.
Yeah, I, I, that's, I agree, and that, and I would say email if available and certified mail.
Because not everybody has email, but emails just get more up, up to be lost, I mean, there's.
Right.
You can go into a spam folder and.
Yeah, I mean, you'd never, I mean, it can be, I feel like it could be used as a, a secondary backup, but I think it needs to be a written.
Well, my, my experience, I would just tell you, sometimes when I had to send a notice out, the drawback to certified mail is if they don't sign for it, if, if they refuse to sign for it, and it sits in the post office for three weeks or four weeks before, and then, then finally comes back undelivered, so, so my.
But do you?
My practice is usually to send it certified and first class, so that the first class, you know, the first class generally won't come back, even if the person that wants to sign for it is going to be delivered.
Okay. I don't have a problem adding first class and certified mail.
Okay. And that way, they don't sign for it, but they got it through the regular first class mail, and get certification from, from the staff that it was mailed by first class. Let me make sure that's eight, that's three point one. Okay, and then eight dash three point two. Gives, talks about the, the way that owner may appeal, and again, it's by, it's thirty days, it's a fifteen days. And they can do that by just mailing it first class mail, and it's deemed received three days after it was mailed. Even if, if, even if the, if it doesn't, even if it doesn't get received, the ordinance is going to presume that it was delivered three days after it was mailed. Eight dash four point five. It deals with revocation of permits. And this is something that was kind of heavily dealt with in 160 D, to protect the vested rights, and so there has to be process, due process that's laid out in 160 D for notice and opportunity to be heard before any, any permits are revoked.
Okay.
Moving on to item W. Which is nine dash one point one. There was requirement under 160 D that any, if you pass an ordinance, let's say, for example, you, any ordinance that has the effect of regulating, or any resolution that has the effect of, of limiting land use, has to be treated like an ordinance, and you have to go through the same steps on those resolutions as you would an ordinance change itself, so, thus incorporating a requirement of 160 D. Nine dash one point two. Deals with definitional things, for example, how you define adjacent or adjoining properties. And corrects the notice requirement. Which I think was probably required under the old law anyway, but it makes it, it corrects the statute, corrects the references. And it also lays out the, the time limits, like we had tonight, at least ten days, not more than twenty-five days before the hearing. Under item Y. Which is nine dash one point seven, which is on page two eighty-one of the statute, this incorporates the changes for conflicts of interest, which was incorporated into 160 D one oh nine, so it kind of lays out for everybody what the, what the standards are for conflicts of interest. And the oath of office.
These are additional versus corrections? These are additional ordinances as opposed to?
That's right, yeah, 160 D introduced a, a whole new, for the first time, they kind of defined in the, in, in the development ordinance is what a conflict of interest is for the boards that are here in these matters. But yes, an additional requirement. And it also incorporates the oath of office requirement that was incorporated in 160 D three oh nine. Yeah, that brings us to Z, section nine point two, which is on, I think that's on, on page two eighty-one, two eighty-two. And again, this incorporates the requirement to 160 D that you make findings with regard to the consistency of the request, whether it's consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan or not, which is a requirement of 160 D, and probably was a requirement before, but wasn't there ordinance before, so. And then. AA, which is on. Let's see. Nine dash two point three.
Two eighty-two.
Yeah, and then, and it deals with the, the comprehensive plan, which was a, a requirement of 160 D, so the planning board, it lays out the planning board's responsibility to make a recommendation with regard to a comprehensive plan. Item BB, nine dash two point three F. Again, it talks about the, incorporates 160 D's requirements as to a large scale rezoning, for example. And, and how you have to make findings with regard to plan consistency. CC, which is dealing with nine dash three. I think it's mainly just dealing with statutory references. I think it's mainly just dealing with statutory references. Under nine dash three. Yeah, nine dash three point one is where most of those are. It deals with the, um, instead of 160A, it's 160D, and, and there's different requirements there, so again, it's changing sexual references. Okay, DD deals with the Board of Adjustment under nine dash four. And again, this lays out the requirements of 160D that they, all their proceedings are, would be as a quasi judicial a hearing as opposed to legislative hearing. And again, that's required on 160D. And then EE under nine point eight. Uh, deals with appeals, and it lays out the, the process of, it changes the appeal period from fifteen days to thirty days. And also deals with, um, lays out the procedure to comply with 160D with regard to judicial proceeding, quasi judicial matters. I'm a little bit confused by this. I guess it's nine point eight. It used to be nine point seven, nine dash seven, it looks like it's now nine point eight.
So does that mean nine point seven is now new? Because I don't see it on the list, but it looks like.
It's not on there.
But it looks like.
It's not on the list, but it is on the, the documents.
It's, yeah, it's in blue like the other ones on the document.
Yeah, so I think, I think it was just a misnumbering of the, of the, because above that it's nine dash seven point two, and then it goes to, I guess the ordinance said, then nine point, nine dash seven, and it should be say nine dash eight. So I guess it's correcting that, that error too.
Okay.
Okay, so I believe that's all of the, all of the changes that we had discussed, that would be designed purely to bring the ordinance into compliance with 160D.
There you go. Discussion from the board. Comments, questions?
We really just had, was it two or three?
Three changes.
Three changes, yeah.
And you guys have those noted?
So I have, uh, under C, um, that we, the maps would be kept in electronic format, GIS, not paper maps here. Under item G, that we have email if known, and then written notice by first class and, oh, and certified mail, or certified mail.
T, I think was the other.
We're correcting under item Q, that should say nine, four dash two point four instead of, um, two point three. And then item T, I think we have the same issue, uh, email if known, plus first class and, and certified mail. That's, that's what my notes.
That's what I have.
Okay.
So do we have an amendment to recommend approval of item one, which is the changes for 160D compliance with the changes we've outlined? I'll make it. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to town council, item number one, the changes for, that meet 160D compliance, uh, which, with the amendments of item C, item G, item Q, and item T as just outlined.
Perfect. Good job. I'll second that.
Curtis?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
T?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. Public comment period. If there's anyone that wants to speak, each speaker must identify themselves, give their names and addresses, and is limited to three minutes. Anybody here want to speak? Alrighty. Planning Bo.
Okay. It's a li- little late to make this suggestion since you just approved, but, um, that vested rights period that you discussed a little bit, and you'll stay it one year. I think with the, the, the project that you just approved tonight, I've been working on since April of twenty-four. And that's on a two acre site. I can see projects, i- it takes, um, forever to get a project approved, this, in our current, uh, work environment. I can, you know, it's a two acre site. If it was twenty-five acre something, i- it, it may go on for two years trying to get the plans approved, so I'm not sure that shouldn't be, in my opinion, extended beyond one year.
Thanks.
Co- Tommy Johnson, seventy-seven sixty-nine, NC Highway sixty-eight, North Stokesdale.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, but that is part of the suggestions that we will address next month. The time.
Yes, if you're going to be doing, uh, assuming we get to, let me pull it up. I think I made notation of that under Roman numeral three, so depending on how much, how far down the list you want to go, um, next month.
Okay.
Um, if you do two and three, if you want to do two and three, or two and three and four next month, then that's.
Okay. Well, council had asked for this to come 160D and then the other ones, so we're at least trying to accomplish that, but thank you for your comments.
And it may be that the town council may, uh, at their hearing, if, if Mr. Johnson speaks in and suggests that to them, they can, they can change it.
They can still.
They can do it at that meeting. If he does that before the, before they take action.
That's right. Well, he didn't know what we're going to talk about totally, so. All right. Announcements, uh, Town Planning Board announcements. The next regular Stokesdale Town Council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August fourteenth, at seven PM inside the Stokesdale Town Hall Council Chambers. The next regular Stokesdale Town Planning Board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM inside the Stokesdale Town Hall Council Chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Aye.
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 Aye.